All right, I'm gonna call to order the planning board meeting October 28th at 5:49 PM. Ken, I don't think we have minutes to approve from the last meeting?
The board does have minutes in front of them. They are from October 20th. But maybe you can put that towards the end of the agenda. So, the first, the other item on the agenda, and I'm pointing it out now, is the site plan approval for 14 West State Street. So that is your agenda, main agenda item for this meeting. You can take the minutes after the item, excuse me? You can take the minutes after the item?
After?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright. So the new item is a site plan, site plan review for 14 West State Street Municipal Office Building.
Yeah, and I can just reread the item that's on the agenda. It's a site plan approval for the proposed project to renovate the former West State Street School, providing a central location for municipal activities under Section 6.3 Site Plan Approval of the Granby Zoning Bylaws and applicable of Section 4.4 Mixed-Use Development Overlay District at 14 West Street and known as Assessors Map 3E5 and 3E6 in the town of Granby. EDM Studios, the applicant town of Granby, and the owner.
Yeah, so I know we gave everyone another week to provide comments, and we got some comments back that there were no additional comments, which I thought was good to see. I know the fire chief met with you guys, and he was good with everything as well. So, I didn't have any additional conditions. I don't know if you guys did.
After reviewing them, the proposed, all the questions were answered, I thought, really well from EDM. And I think the only question I had was, was, it was brought up, where they keep the town equipment now in that parking lot, maybe. It was mentioned about screening. That was my only concern of the project.
What, sorry?
The equipment in the parking lot? I believe there was language about screening.
Screaming?
Yes. Yep, yep. So, sorry.
Well, we've talked to our meetings today, and two of the conics boxes definitely have to be moved. We're still trying to figure out if the temporary garage has to be moved. We'll probably know by tomorrow if it has to be moved. If it has to be moved, then to find out how far or where it goes.
Yeah.
So does the engineer or anything else?
Why would it have to be moved? Is that for means of construction? Okay, I didn't know if it was in violation of anything.
Installation of the above-ground tanks.
I got you. Okay.
And potentially, due to the wow.
Yeah.
And it's just a temporary structure, I guess, right?
Yeah, it looked like one of those hoop houses or something?
It houses the equipment for the maintenance department.
That was it, like, for the project, that maybe screening is required. Since it was a parking lot at one time, now it's kind of utilities. I think it'd be nice for the neighbors to try to-
Right, well, they still have those containers there? Are they still there? Those two blue-
Yeah, those two containers are the plans that I-
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess they're gonna move-
The large trucks and warehouse and- Yeah.
I think the town vehicles are there.
I don't think it's screening.
Fenceings.
Or fence, fencing or shrubs, just to, just to kind of- Just to make it visibly a little better. Because it, no, it was a parking lot, now it's kind of a it's a highway department accessory, I guess.
It's gonna stay like that? They're gonna keep-
I think, I think they're gonna continue to use it.
They put wood out there.
I completely agree with you on what I'm saying. That's what I understand.
Yeah.
There's no other place in town that can house that.
I got you.
So is that, is that a request that gets moved?
Yeah, that, oh, no, not a request, just a request that there is screens. That'd be my only concern. Everything else looked good.
And there's no parking concerns, right? There's plenty of parking.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, there was plenty of parking. They went over the lighting and the waste removal.
Yeah, I mean, the structure itself is existing.
Yeah.
That's a main portion of the project.
Yeah.
Is the screening you're looking for from the other street or where are we looking?
I'm not really looking for anything. I think it's just a good courtesy when that was utilized as a parking lot. Now it's more equipment. And I believe the language in there said there was sufficient room for screening. So, I'd like to see screening utilized. Arbor byed evenings or something.
There wasn't like a specific part of the plan you were looking at to screening and pulling it up now?
Where the open is is all on the east side.
Okay.
Yeah. I think it would be a nice courtesy for the neighbors.
I mean, it's been there, though, for the last three years.
Yeah, yeah.
So you want to make it part of the budget, screen it?
I mean, I think it would be nice, yeah. I mean, if it, if it's overruled or something by the board or whatever, it's, that's fine, yeah. I mean, to go from a, a school parking lot with cars to conics boxes, hoop houses, and equipment, I think it would be a nice common courtesy to do for the neighbors. Even if it's just, you know, blocking the view, planting trees and arbor byedies.
Yeah.
So, you're talking like this area here?
Yeah, on that right side.
On the east side?
Yes, the east side. So all the equipment is right here. There are neighbors.
Okay.
There's a, like a duplex right here, and there's somebody across.
It's, it's a, Kevin, too.
Is that what that is? Yeah, yeah.
It says usually for school there.
Yeah.
It's only people-
Maybe it's not a concern by anybody, but I just think it'd be nice.
Question would be exactly how, like, where do we start and stop? Do you have the tree line here?
Yeah.
And then, like, the thought was, if anything, are you just trying to put some additional-
Yes, yeah, that's there. Maybe here, if there isn't, I can't remember.
I don't think, are you gonna fix the stone wall? That's sort of like, is that something, or is that not-
Our focus is primarily on the west side for this project. Like, if anything, in terms of what we are going in terms of additional that's related directly to the renovation work that's being done, is these tanks here? So I could see, if anything, the focus of our screening would be there.
I got you.
Yeah, so-
Above-ground tanks?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I just, I don't think there's any neighbors over there, that's all.
No, just the bathroom houses from Commerce Street.
Yeah, so more, if anything, look at what the tree line is here. If we have a tree cover here, this is probably good. And then add some additional on the drive?
Yeah, yeah, that'd be, I mean, I've, I've got, I've heard other people in town saying, you know, it looks like a junkyard now. Because of the, the equipment over there.
Where's the equipment right now in relation to here?
The hoop structure is right here, essentially.
Okay.
The conics boxes are here. They're gonna move.
For the tanks, yeah.
And this is all parking lot with town vehicles.
Okay.
Like highway trucks and, and some trucks.
Yeah.
Okay. So you have exactly here where you highlighted, right, screening there?
Yeah, that's where I'm, where, where we enter from.
Yeah.
West Street. So just essentially try to clean up.
That's all, yeah.
Okay.
So, should we make a motion, or are we still have more things like that?
I'm good with, with that. I don't have any other feedback.
If I may, Board, before you make your motion, if you could identify your findings, so that can be written into the decision. That was what I shared with the Board with the application. So, you know, Chris hasn't pulled up, but it basically is the criteria for how you would approve a site plan, you know, stating stating, yeah, that it's, that the development shall be integrated into the existing terrain and surrounding landscape, obviously, if you reuse of a building. Architectural style should be compatible with our historic character. A lot of these, I think, is your, your statements, that it's reused, it's an existing structure, right? Whether or not you're adding conditions to this approval, presumably those conditions are going to meet the, 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 the nature of meeting your criteria that you've put into the bylaw. So, if anything, you know, if, if the Board wants to make a couple of statements to say that it meets these criteria before you act on the permit, that would be preferable.
Yeah, so I mean, I think it's definitely integrated into the existing terrain and surrounding landscape because it is an existing building. We're not changing the structure. We're not changing the appearance of the structure. I think that covers a majority of it. And then as far as utilities go, are utilities changing at all?
Yes.
So, okay.
So we are making available service.
Okay. And is that currently underground or overhead? Underground.
Once it comes up, the street.
And it's staying underground?
Yeah.
Okay, so we've made that then, so underground. Were feasible?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, to your point, Nate, about the screening, so exposed storage areas, machinery service areas, truck loading areas, utility buildings and structures, and other unsightly uses shall be set back of, of screening to protect neighbors. So the screening that you had outlined, I think, would meet that.
I think it would be a good, common courtesy.
Yeah.
But again, that's presuming that stuff's gonna stay there.
Presuming that the, that's, the equipment is going to still be parked in that east area. But I know the conics is have to move for the tanks, so those aren't really gonna be in consideration. And then the temporary structures, same thing, so I would say it's kind of to be determined anyway where that equipment's gonna land at this point. But a majority of the project focus is on the west side of the property anyway.
I think EDM did a good job at all of our concerns, the traffic, noise, vibration, emissions, lighting. Lighting will meet the specifications of the town standards. Exterior storage, that's where the screening was brought up.
Yep.
Waste disposal. Continue their current waste disposal, so no change there. Loading and unloading. Typical office hour stuff.
Yep.
Walkways are gonna maintain the same. They're just gonna refresh what's existing there. Doesn't look like the parking is changing much.
Yeah, really, most of the parking changes are related to accessible. So just for upgrading, reworking where the any of that parking is, and then updating sidewalks.
Yeah. Signs are for another day, sounds like. Landscape requirements. Anything's better than what's there. Appearance and architectural.
Yeah, access appears to be adequate.
Yeah, it's all maintaining the same.
So I've noted those for your decision, which, we'll incorporate that into the decision. You know, your next step is to provide a motion. I know that you've been talking about possibly an additional approval with a condition. So, I don't know if you want to finesse that language. You said screening. Was there a more descriptive?
I think kind of what you were outlining was screening on the east entrance.
Yeah, I think, to be more specific, yeah, the, from West Street, the east entrance there.
Okay.
Not necessarily where the tanks are. But, like you said, it's all pending whether the town keeps their equipment there anymore. I, I don't know.
So maybe the way that that can be worded is screening on east entrance from West Street, if equipment, if town equipment is going to be parked there.
That sounds good, yeah.
Okay, so that's, so it's, the condition reads, screening on east entrance from West Street if town equipment is going to be parked there. So let's add a condition.
Alright, yeah, I'm good with that. You can make a motion, right, would they?
Why should I make a motion?
What is the language I'm looking for? It says, make a motion to approve the project with special conditions?
And, yeah, so the motion, the project of 14 West Street with the condition of screening on east entrance from West Street if the town equipment is going to be parked there.
What Ken said, yeah.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay. Then it's, the requests were all in favor.
All in favor? Hi.
Great. Okay, so as the Board knows, we'll draft this decision, and among the three of you will provide this through your signature, and we'll file this in accordingly.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry, we're all new to running this without Jim.
You what?
We're all new to running this without Jim.
Determining, that's the hard part.
We'll get the swing of it.
Yeah.
Okay, so does that take care of it for 14 West Street? I think so.
Yes, and so the other item on your agenda is the Planning Board Rules and Regulations, which I did share with the Board last week.
I appreciate this one. Very nice.
And so, this is sections one through five. But before I do that, I wanted to introduce my colleague Aiden, Hemine McMahon. He's a senior planner at the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. He's going to be complimentary to me here at, in Granby. He was recently promoted to the Director of the Department, so-
Wow, congratulations.
Time-
Congratulations.
Thank you. My time is, is moving elsewhere. However, we both have, both my colleague Aiden and my colleague Kyle are supporting the projects that I currently am working on, and this is one of them. So, you know, Aiden is doing this work also in Blanford. So, it's weird, what planning boards do, and-
I look forward to-
Will you still be with us, Ken, or will it be Aiden, or will you still be-
Well, I, it'll probably be a mixture of us two. I think for your next meeting, it will likely be both of us, just because you have permits. You have application.
So then you can do-
So maybe when it's development application, it'll be, like, all pop in when you have public hearings, et cetera. But otherwise, Aiden more than takes a lot of the work, then.
Even though it's Granby?
But, yes. So, and the other thing was, Aiden worked on this. So Aiden worked on the, the rules and regs, so it's been an ongoing project. You know, I'm bringing forward, as we've been talking about it, is the first five sections. There are 10 sections altogether. And six through 10 are typically your application requirements. So, what is required in occupation, et cetera. So that's, that'll be forthcoming, but thought that we would give you the first set, or the first five sections, to talk about, you know, if there's items missing from this. In addition to what your, how meetings are scheduled, what happens at meetings, because I know that, you know, you, you mentioned how you look to Jim. All of you can run a meeting. If Jim's not here, or if Jim got forbidden, decide to leave the Board, then the Board, the Board will need to continue, right? So, this hopefully will be some guidance as to how to continue your meetings, or how to have your meetings. And then we do talk briefly about fees, and that's the last section. But I wonder if, in this first, you know, in this first review of this, if there's anything that you're seeing is missing, or you would like addressed in this. What I'll say is, these are rules and regulations, so they do not require a public, they do not- they require a public hearing by the Planning Board. It does not require to go to town meeting. These are the Planning Board's rules and regs, and they are based on your zoning bylaw, which do require you to go to a town meeting if you want to change those, but this does not. So this is spelling out a lot of the processes that the Board usually relies on, and also spells out what your bylaw says you have to promulgate as far as rules and regs. So, you know, I think the benefit of having these are allowing your applicants to go to this, allowing the Board to have a resource in addition to the town, and if knowing what the zoning law-
So, to back up a little bit, with the, the application, if it meets all the requirements, that's usually happened administratively, either through the town or through our consultant, reviewing them before they, it comes to us. And then, then from the technical aspect, you know, then, then the Board, so once it hits this, once it hits the table, it's an assumption that they've paid the fees. It's, you know, that all the paperwork's there, the, the correct amount of copies, et cetera, et cetera.
Do you do a redline version as you're making these edits? For a good comparison to how the language used to be?
This, there was no-
There was nothing?
For Granby. So this is a first step.
Done scratch.
Yeah, it is kind of based on other communities, but obviously, you know, we took it based on my knowledge of the Board, you know, and what Boards typically do.
Yeah, it's a, it's a strong guideline. There's some things that you can wave, wave, wave off around too much, but mostly it's just, it's a guideline and process.
Yeah.
To make sure that we're-
No, was, was this asked for by, like, the Select Board or something, or just something that-
No, I think it was, it was something that I brought up to the Board probably years ago, where I said, the Board needs rules and regs, so we'll work on that. We'll put it into the work plan.
Can micromanaging.
Well, I'm also, you know, I think one of the things that I've heard, you know, Nate made it apparent, it, it is, with Jim, knows the process, right? So if Jim is absent, the Board needs to know.
You should be able to.
And so- I still need reminders from-
Sure, sure. And that's, that's why we're here. But-
Well, it's good to have it in front of us, so that it hands something to all back there.
When you develop these, how, how do you know where you're not overreaching too far?
That, I mean, that's a good question. I don't know if you-
No, that's, I mean, maybe, I guess I would say, this is very much a draft, right? So we're presenting this to you to, to hear from you if it seems like we're overreaching. And these are, you know, suggested.
Is this based on Blanford or other towns?
This is based on a, on a few different towns, not on Blanford.
Yeah, some of it's dictated by state.
Right, right, of course, yeah.
By state.
Yeah, that's true.
So a lot of this too is, you know, things like forum and voting, those are dictated by John Forty A, right?
Gotcha, okay.
I think some of the things that might, we might consider overreach is like, does the Board need subcommittees? We spell out a subcommittee meeting. If the Board were to ever say, for instance, the town is going through this zoning bylaw update project, I don't know if there's anyone on the Planning Board on that committee. That would probably be something, or a couple of Planning Board members were to, you know, separate from the Board to do something specific. That would be a subcommittee. But a lot of this, I think, is also intuitive to, like, what you do, and like, if you're absent, what does that mean?
Yeah, yeah.
It talks about how your officers are elected. You know, this calls into the five positions you have on the Board. Chair, Vice Chair, Secretary, oops, I missed Treasurer. So Treasurer needs to be-
Oh, I have a really good question. So will Aiden still be the Secretary, most part?
Oh, yeah, I mean, PVPC will prepare the, the minutes. And, you know, obviously, we can continue doing this. If you want to review them before they go to the Board, we can also do that.
No, it's okay, just one.
I mean, yeah, but we will continue to prepare them.
Well, thank you for doing it, Ken. I think it'll be really helpful for all of us.
Yeah.
Sure.
It's good to stay-
And a lot of the Boards in town do have, there's some on another Board, and we do have some feeling.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, I think, you know, in general, the, at least this first, these four, first four sections are kind of based on best practices of and, 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 and best general. So-
I got you.
We'll add Treasurer.
Is there a certain date you'd like this to be official?
No, I think i- if the Board is satisfied, you obviously need to see the second half. So there's Section 6 through 10, so maybe at the next meeting, uh, maybe not, because the next meeting is hearings. Or maybe, we'll see. We'll put it, we'll have it ready for you to review. But presumably, then you would just schedule a public hearing accordingly.
For this?
That needs a public hearing. This needs a public hearing for the Planning Board, yes.
This year?
Yes.
I have a question, please. So this, how, is this in conflict with, like, what Jim's already doing, like, whether this, the, the other Boards are revealing? Yeah.
No, this wouldn't. This wouldn't be in conflict unless there are things in the zoning project that you are going to be establishing rules and regs, which then would land in here. But right now, it doesn't, because it's based on your current bylaw.
So, first of all, this is all administrative. Administrative, even changes, don't need public hearing or approval. The the only thing I can see on here that might require that would be the fees. Why why a public hearing for this?
That's what I was told by council of another community. So, I mean, we can confirm that.
Yeah.
I think if the board.
Yeah.
This is a guideline that should be used.
Right, sure.
And it and it doesn't waver from what we've already been doing.
That's correct.
It just, it just formalizes it, I don't, this is, I don't.
Yeah, we'll check.
I don't have a problem doing that, but I don't, I don't, I also don't like making more work for ourselves, I.
Makes sense. So it it's funny, we were talking about fees, but as I was reviewing it, I was like, actually, you could charge a lot with these. Um, it's compared to other communities. It was the other communities that I was thinking of that didn't charge a lot. So I think yours are actually probably in line. Um, usually the one I look at first is A and R. I think A and R is appropriate, I've seen one fifty. Um, you know, and I think you need to figure out like what is the cost of administering the various processes for that.
That's the caveat there.
Yeah.
So we we've, we did these not too long. Not with this board, but with with the previous board and review them, but we we left ourselves out so that if the fees don't cover the peer review or complicated, it all gets charged back to the.
That's correct.
So we've got that, that out. So it's not a flat, you know, a thousand dollar fee, and if it goes over, then the town has to absorb it.
Right, and so so what I'll say to that too, I think one of the processes that we'll probably need to establish is working with you more closely, Chris. With regards to the treasurer um confirming bills. Um, I know that um I haven't been doing it and um the admin, they think was, yeah, unclear as to whether or not fees were being charged on top of the um public notices. So we'll just capture, make sure to, especially with this next one. The school you wouldn't need to, uh, because that's a town project, but everything else.
Yeah, town projects are typically way that any of these are.
So we would want that language in this section.
We could spell, we could spell out language that says what, what um how fees would be assessed and how invoicing happens to the to the applicant, either before or after a project.
So, so this board, and I'm guilty of it as well, you know, the board is all that. That's been one of the things we've been very weak on is is um collecting the proper fees and permits for um for projects, especially subdivisions, anything large. So what what we have done in the past is we we take a retainer. Right, we can take a chunk of money, not, you know, something that the the board would know them, but other than the the normal stuff, we can take a a fee upfront and then release funds from that as the project moves forward.
What um how did you make those determinations? As to like how much you would be collecting, was it maybe for, I could see that for subdivision, but maybe.
That's where I'm referring to.
So you're talking like a like a ten percent retainer on the projected peer review costs?
No, we would take, we would, there there's been a couple of different ways, we've we've either done that or we've made all the costs borne by the applicant and they pay it directly.
So they would pay the peer review directly and we would be a middleman?
Okay, so they're, and case by case, the board can decide. It's, you know, it's we get the, we also get the town treasurer involved. Because they manage the funds.
Yeah, that much is the interest bearing.
It has to be an interest bearing account and they they do the disbursements.
Correct.
Um, based on what we send them, so the treasurer will send them. More involved, so it can get kind of sticky, so the cleaner we get, we can make it like a peer review. They, we typically, the applicant chooses the peer, the 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 peer reviewer based on a list or someone that they want to bring in that meets, that the board votes to. So the qualified to do the peer review. And then they report to the board um their findings. And and then um the board is good with it, votes to approve it or there's minimal adjustments or whatever, whatever the case may be. Then the the invoice can go directly to the applicant who choose to do it.
And we wouldn't need to do a retainer that way then? Correct? Because it would be going direct to the peer reviewer from the applicant, which I think would definitely be much easier for the town. Because then we wouldn't have to, one, float the money, and two, properly put that in an interest bearing account.
It it alleviates some of the weight taken in the process, so.
Yeah. So I would say that would probably be good, which is also included here, that in the section five.
Sure. So, I mean, one of, so one of the conversations regarding peer review is whether or not the planning board wants control over the process of how a peer reviewer is chosen. Right, because obviously, you know, someone can come in and if the planning board has a list of peer reviewers that they've used in the past and to say, choose one of these, there could be, you know, maybe some question as to like here, or you go through a process where what we've done in other communities is um serving in in a similar similar capacity, sending out the application to three firms that, you know, that we're familiar with. And then from there, choose either the cheapest one or ones that are qualified that the board will choose. Uh, and then work with the applicant to say, this is the cost and the board, you know, wants to work with this third party review.
So, we've done that before, we have, we do have a list, I don't know how current it is, if some of these firms are still doing this work or or if they even still exist, but um we can provide them with 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 a current list. But we've also approved, well, I know so and so that we've worked with before. And and I'm okay with that, because these are, these are professional, professionals that have to stand it and they're they're not, and every time they come back, it's, I think it's, they got to find something from 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 a colleague that they think needs to be adjusted, or the calcs could be a little different or whatever, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, as long as they, you know, the firm meets, is is qualified to do the work.
I think it's challenging to keep an updated, ongoing list.
Yeah, I mean, the thing is, so, case in point. Uh, I think the board, based on a forthcoming application for definitive subdivision, whether or not the board wants to entertain another peer review of that, which already has been peer reviewed. But it's no such a projects where you can control the process by saying, okay, we have this application. PVPC consultant or planning board consultant, can you get us a third party review? We have a process that we use everywhere, which is identifying firms, asking them if they don't have a comparative interest, if they'd be willing to submit a a scope of work. And then basically what happens is of the three, one is going to be the one that's chosen, the board will sign off, the chair usually signs off on the uh actual third party review. Um, but it's a pretty seamless process by, you know, if you're not relying on a list or asking the applicant to choose from a list. It's it's a matter of, I mean, it it it, you know, it's at the board's choosing, but um, yeah, I'll just say that other boards, every board needs.
And and the the other thing, especially on a subdivision, we're also going to be using that third party to do inspections, make sure that it's being installed.
Yeah, for control construction.
Correct, to make sure it's being installed the way it was designed and that that meets the the town bylaws, you know, for compaction, materials, all of that.
So now when you, let's say we did call for a peer review. And you have three companies that you're going to send them to. When we call for that peer review in the meeting, would you know what companies in real time, right away, who you'd be sending it to?
I think if the board already showed interest in going to a third party review, I probably would have already had a conversation to identify the firm, or go through a process for the board to choose from. Um, and we, you know, I would, we would probably provide our recommendation, this was the least amount. You know, this this particular entity has X, Y, and Z as credentials, and you would presumably choose that person. Uh, but we obviously try to make it as efficient as possible, knowing that if the board really wants to have a third party review, we probably would already anticipate it, instead of prolonging the process, saying, you know, we have this application. And and I kind of know typically what which products will, right, based on the size. Um, and I think too, if the your highway superintendent is saying, yeah, this probably deserves a third party review, because he is a, you know, an engineer, he has a PE.
And he's been on afterwards.
Exactly, and so does he want that, or does he want a third party review to review it for the board? Uh, but, yeah.
Most of that, unless there's some tricky dr- uh stormwater or some bridges or something like that, tricky stuff. Some of those don't require a a third party. They do require a third party to make sure that the inspection, the the construction controls are being conducted.
Yeah, that was your Dollar General. Dollar.
That's a, that's a good example, because there were some things that weren't done. That one didn't require construction control, but.
Until after.
But the, what's that?
Until, till it was failing, till the storm.
And then there was, there was an issue with something that they, they, I forgot the details, something didn't get, it was a simple fix.
Yeah.
But um it was picked up and they had to come back.
Yep.
Matter of fact, uh we yeah, we, I I think we 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 used the right, because it was a condition that we used the right to to pull their occupancy permit if they didn't corrupt it. So we, on projects like that, we can always have that in there. So, so, you know, we have leverage to make sure that project's done and it's failing. You still have to fix it.
Yeah.
You still have to make it work. Even if the, even if the peer review came through, and in this case, I think it did. And they all agreed that this is the right way to engineer, and it still was wrong, they still have to come back and make it right.
Yeah.
Have some sort of a process and hold them accountable.
Wouldn't that be the building inspector, that would hold them accountable, no?
Um, yes. We don't do it directly, but when we, when we put conditions on a, on a a plan, whether it's whether it's a special permit or not, it's up to the code enforcement to enforce the conditions.
Yeah.
And so the peer review is really functioning also as an independent engineer, third party engineer throughout the process, throughout the project, until completion, when a subdivision, right?
So checks and balances, it's it's common, it's not like the thing I don't like to do is reinvent the wheel.
Yeah, we still have to say, but no enforcement, I guess, enforcement.
And the occupancy permit should not be issued until, we we've had this problem before, where it wasn't an occupancy, but it was a a it was some, it was some solar projects off of East Street that the screening was installed.
Hmm.
Correct, or to, you know, the the specification of the 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 screening that was supposed to be used and it was lack, lack of um inspections on the code enforcement. And they were given the the option to, or or allowed to go ahead and open up and operate, start operating. We had no leverage after that.
Yeah.
To make them come back and do what what the conditions were, so.
Mm-hmm.
It's important that the the code enforcement pays attention to the, you know, the conditions or
Right.
of the subject or or something.
Yeah. So we'll add that language um with regards to peer review in this section. Um.
And technically on a big project, they should come back to us stating that all of those conditions were met. To the best of his ability to inspect them.
So like an affidavit, basically?
And then the planning board has, the planning board should be able to sign off on it as well, we haven't done that, but it should be a check and balance.
I mean, I think.
It's nasty a problem, that's a good idea.
What towns do before that occupancy permit is usually pass around town hall and other department heads that they got to sign off. Um, you know, the planning board would sign off, assuming that, or, you know, Jim presumably, if he was given something and he's like, I know that they didn't do this correctly, we'll say, I'm not signing off on this. And then say to the code enforcement or the building inspector who's issuing the occupancy permit. Um, yeah, you need to check this, this is not according to the plan.
That that should be part of the the second phase of this, that we're not, we're not the technicians, we're not the engineers, we're the architects. We're relying on either third party or the town building inspector, code enforcement officer, tell us that, yes, they've met the criteria that were, and the conditions that were set for. The problem in the past is we change building inspectors and code enforcement officers.
Every more day.
Yeah.
So the one picks up, the other one lets off, and then he comes into it, by the time they finally get somebody, he's trying to dig himself out of the the must that was left behind and goes, and things fall through the all through the cracks, but it shouldn't be, especially on a subdivision or in a technical special apartment.
Mm-hmm.
So a construction complete document.
Yeah, I mean, that'll be helpful, I think, well, we can definitely establish this in the zoning process, because I'm sure what will end up happening um as we have to meet with the zoning committee that hasn't met yet. Um, are these things where we talk about process as far as, you know, a gym brought up. How do permits end up getting their certificate of occupancy? Knowing if the planning board knows that it wasn't being done correctly, or it's not built to the specs. Is your control there is typically, and that's why I brought up the the example of the permit that says planning board and someone having to sign off on it.
So so the the building inspector and code enforcement officer we have in place today is very familiar.
Yeah.
He's, he's got a lot of experience, so anything he could bring a lot of.
Sure.
A lot of information to us about process.
Yes.
Problems handled with it.
Yes.
So could there be other stipulations if it wasn't necessarily an occupied building? Like an occupancy permit, but if it was a, you know, a park or something without an occupancy permit?
If the planning board had a purview over it, presumably, I mean, that's the thing, so.
A monument, something, it's something.
Hmm, yeah, if you, if if there was a requirement for them to come to the planning board to get something permitted. I mean, you as a planning board can also provide comments if it's for another board, right? So if you wanted to provide a comment letter to something that's going for the conservation commission, you could. Um, but.
Now, those solar panels on East Street are is a good example.
Yes.
Yep.
There was, the the planning board approved the the project. And they were given the, it's not, it's not a certificate of occupancy, it's a it's basically a certificate to operate.
Sure.
You're signed off, you, the electrical inspector signed off, everybody signed off, you've met. But they never followed through on the on the screen.
So they probably need that doc, Ken, for insurance reasons or law reasons.
Yeah.
Maybe that's another way to withhold.
You know, not all projects require, you know, that kind of, but there are some that do. You know, not, not all projects require, you know, that kind of, but there are some that do, and, you know, and it's common practice for larger communities that see this stuff all the time, we don't. So it's not common for us to, you know, Dollar General is, you know, that was a, you know, it was new to the, to the, to the board that was in place at the time, so. That's the other thing that changes, you know, it could be the similar projects over the last five years, but you have different people sitting here.
Yeah.
That's why this makes, if nothing else, it allows us to be more consistent.
Yes, yeah.
So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So you'll get the next half, um, at your next meeting, which I think the board, based on our conversation, is going to be scheduled for November twenty fourth, rather than November tenth. We are sked, no.
No, I'm, I'm agreeing with you.
November two, so November twenty fourth, we will have one eighty five West State Street, um, the dock, for a site plan approval. Still, I don't know if the subdivision is going to be able to meet, um, then, but because we need to get those materials before we schedule anything, so if anything, that'll be in December. But.
That's a, that's a.
So.
There's no choice, but that's a tough week.
November twenty.
That's, yes, that's the end of the week, right?
Yeah.
It is this, it is Thanksgiving week.
I mean, it's later in the week, but some people try to, or, or solve just.
Do you?
Unless somebody has issue with that.
Like if you know, you four can be here on the twenty fourth.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
I can, I'm committing to it.
Okay, so, yeah, we won't have a scheduled meeting on the tenth, but we'll have one on the twenty fourth. And it'll be with one eighty five West State Street, we'll bring section six through ten, and make those, some of those edits in this document. Then, also, I should have ready for you then, the, um, the actual zoning diagnostic report. Where I briefly talked about it through the PowerPoint, so I'll have that by your next meeting, you can go with that.
So when we, when we get through this, and there's no correction, then it's, it's, uh, and it doesn't need a hearing?
You just put on the agenda with saying approve.
Then, then this should be a, a, our bible here, that should be pinned there in case we need it.
Sure, yeah, I think in addition to the zoning, it's like, she had those, right, that's second goal.
Okay. Anything else?
You have minutes.
What happened?
So we had a full board, Ben?
Uh, no, Nate was not here at the meeting of the twenty.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Monday, October twen- twentieth, twenty twenty five, meeting minutes.
A second to motion?
No, it's not a motion, I'm gonna make the motion.
Wow.
I don't make the motions.
I thought you did.
You're making the motion.
You, you need to make the motion.
I make the motion? Motion to approve the minutes from September twenty second, twenty twenty five?
There was second?
Aye.
There was second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries, minutes approved. Anything else? Does anybody else have anything else going on?
Did you want to say anything?
No, excited to work with you all going forward. Nice to be able to get to know you. Yep.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
The second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Thank you, everybody.